Thank you for joining us for the Wadsworth City School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, December 9th. If you'll stand and join me in the line.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by its nation in this world with the liberty and justice of our.
Well, welcome to the board.
Here.
Here.
Jill Stevens?
Here.
Here.
Back in motion. A second for approval and signing of our November 4th meeting. So moved.
Mr. Bevan?
I made the word.
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
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 I need the presidency to say that this time I'll ask for our principals and students of the month to please make their way backstage before we will read the page after this.
I don't know what the ring is, sorry people.
Good evening. I don't think it's on.
You're good, yep.
Am I good? Okay. Good evening, my name is Laura Maslach, proud principal, Lincoln Elementary. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Skylar Bates, Lincoln's December Board Student of the Month. Skylar is the daughter of Cody and Mary, and big sister to Autumn and Wyatt. She has two cats named Lula, Luna and Coco. Here's what Skylar's teachers, Mrs. Barker and Ms. Sibio, had to say when nominating her. Skylar demonstrates admirable determination and motivation in her academic endeavors. She is perseverant in her pursuits and consistently attentive in class, showing a strong desire to learn. She approaches challenges in and out of the classroom with a competitive spirit. Her inquisitive and caring nature shines through in her interactions with others. Skylar shows leadership in various roles at Lincoln. She is a shining example of a student council representative and displays kindness and excitement during the morning announcements. Outside of school, Skylar enjoys drawing, playing outside with friends, going swimming, and playing video games like Fortnite. Her favorite colors are red, blue, pink, and purple. Her favorite dessert: her mom's homemade pumpkin pie. One of Skylar's most admirable qualities is her compassionate heart for serving and helping others. She helps out at home by cooking in the kitchen and even changing her baby brother's diapers. She enjoyed serving others at the last student council sponsor McDonald's night. Skylar loves to read, and her favorite author is Mo Willems. She has loved his books since kindergarten. She enjoys math, reading, and writing this year in 4th grade. Skylar would like to be a waitress and a singer just like Taylor Swift when she grows up. She wants to do something that will make others feel happy. She is also looking forward to someday having her first official babysitting job. When I asked Skylar who she admires, she said she admires her dad, mom, and uncle Nathan. Her dad, because he's a big, strong chef. Her mom, because she can tell her anything, even her secrets. And her uncle Nathan, because he served in the army and he's just a nice person. He even spoils her and her siblings sometimes. Skylar is a bright and compassionate young woman who positively influences our school community. We are so proud of you, Skylar. Keep being amazing and always remember that you are smarter than you think, braver than you seem, stronger than you feel, and you can do hard things. Will you help me in congratulating Skylar Bates?
Good evening. I'm Steve Moore, I'm the Assistant Superintendent. Mr. Shalala is not here tonight, but we will introduce our Eisham Student of the Month. It's Jillian Magg. Jillian's the parent of Jonathan and Jessica Magg. She's a 4th grader. This is from Mr. Shalala. I would like to nominate Jillian Magg for Board Student of the Month because she consistently demonstrates the qualities that make her a positive role model in our classroom. Jillian is always safe, following classroom rules, and making sure she and her classmates are in a secure and respectful environment. She is kind to everyone around her, offering help and encouragement to her classmates. Jillian also shows great responsibility in completing her task on time and always putting forth her best effort. One of the things that stands out most about Jillian is her gratitude. She frequently expresses appreciation for her teachers and friends, making others feel valued and appreciated. Jillian's positive attitude, thoughtful actions, and dedication make her a truly deserving candidate for Board Student of the Month. And I think that's it. This is Jillian Magg, 4th grader from Eisham Elementary. Please help me in congratulating her.
Good evening. My name is Dave Ryder, and I'm the principal at Overlook Elementary. I am thrilled to recognize 4th grade student Tyler Harsh as the Overlook December Board Student of the Month. Tyler was nominated by his teacher, Mr. Basie. In her nomination, she states Tyler is a great student and an example of what it means to be an Overlook Grizzly. Tyler exemplifies being safe, kind, and responsible, day in and day out, by always being a wonderful role model to all students and staff members. Tyler has a great work ethic and a huge heart. He comes to class every morning with a big smile on his face, ready to learn. His energetic personality and compassion for others make him a wonderful student and friend to his peers. Tyler's joy for learning shows each day through the inquisitive questions during math and reading, and his willingness to take or to tackle a challenge when it comes his way. It's been wonderful to watch him mature and grow into the student he is now from 3rd grade to just the short time he has been in 4th grade. Keep up the great work, Tyler. Your future as a Grizzly is so bright. At school, Tyler serves as a preschool helper, student council member, and he's on the announcements team. And you can see that he is dressed for, uh, he was at the Walmart and he was helping ring the bell for the Salvation Army, so he literally just got here. So you can see a little bit of that personality. Away from school, his favorite restaurant is Marie's, where he enjoys their pizza. He likes playing football and basketball, and he has a pet pug named Gucci. Advice he would offer our 3rd grade students when transitioning to 4th grade would be: Be strong, be prepared, and be prepared to take on more responsibility. Tyler, we are all proud of you. Please join me in congratulating Tyler Harsh as the Overlook Elementary December Board Student of the Month.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Hampshire, and I'm the principal at Valley View Elementary. Tonight, I am super excited to introduce everyone to Maya Latin. Maya is an amazing young lady. I just cannot say enough about her. She was nominated by her 4th grade teacher, Ms. Octella. Ms. Octella decided that an acrostic poem might be a good way to introduce her to you all, and so here it is. M. She's a magnificent friend. Y. She is young and vibrant. A. She is always willing to lend a helping hand. This evening, she is joined by her mom, Micah, and her cousin, right? Who's super excited to be back there. So, when Maya started with us this school, in this school year, she was brand new to Valley View, and she said that her favorite part about Valley View when she came to the building was that all the kids were so nice to her. I have to believe that that is partly because Maya was so nice to them as well. She settled into her new surroundings and made so many friends right away. She came in each morning with a huge smile and was prepared for the day. She has an amazing desire to learn. She's impressed all of her teachers with that desire, and she has stepped forward as a very quiet but strong leader. She's always doing the right thing and has become a great role model in our building. Her kindness is infectious, and she includes everyone in the class. Her favorite subjects are math, and her favorite food, of course, pizza. When Maya's not at school, she really enjoys coloring and books to calm herself. She's involved in cheer, volleyball, bowling, and softball. She's going to be a very active young lady, I think, moving forward. Maya also likes to hang out with her mom in her spare time. She says she really enjoys spending time with her mom. They like to make lots of memories. She loves to jump on her trampoline with her brother and run errands with her dad. She said her family is really important to her because of all of those memories and all of the things that they do together. She likes watching movies with them and traveling especially to Colorado. When she is older, she has decided that she would like to become a veterinarian because she loves to take care of animals. I know that she is going to have an amazing future because she is an amazing young lady. Congratulations, Maya.
Hello and good evening, Board of Education and Wadsworth community. I'm Brandon Cobb, proud principal of Central Intermediate School. I'm here tonight to celebrate our December Board Student of the Month, Everly Mullenchau. Everly is the daughter of Brian and Laura Mullenchau, and she's here tonight also with her brother Elliot. Everly is a 5th grader, was nominated by her teachers, Mrs. Adams and Mrs. Nemzura. Today, I had the chance to talk with Everly, and she shared that language arts is her favorite subject because she enjoys reading. She's currently reading a great one, The Only, The One and Only Ivan. Her favorite restaurant is Chipotle, and she enjoys trips to Sky Zone Trampoline Park. She also described her mom as her inspiration because she helps her a lot. Here's what her teachers had to say. Everly is a very hardworking, dedicated student. She turns in quality work each day, follows directions, sets a great example for her peers, and takes pride in everything she does. She cares about others, shows respect towards her teachers and peers, and lends a helping hand to anyone in need. Outside of school, Everly participates in gymnastics, and this same dedication carries to that. She is a well-rounded individual and very deserving of this award. We feel extremely luckily, lucky to be a small part in her education in the Wadsworth City Schools. Please help me congratulate CIS December Board Student of the Month, Everly Mullenchau.
Good evening. I am Chris Roberts, proud principal of Wadsworth Middle School, and today I have the honor of celebrating an outstanding student, Bryson Scott, as our December Board of Education Student of the Month. He is the son of Cory and Danielle Scott. Bryson exemplifies dedication, enthusiasm, and a positive outlook that inspires those around him. His love for learning shines through in his favorite subjects: math, science, and physical education. He enjoys the precision and challenge of plotting numbers and working with fractions in mathematics, the hands-on experiences in science, and the energizing activities in gym class. These interests reflect a well-rounded and active learner who thrives both mentally and physically. Recently, Bryson took pride in his language arts essay where he skillfully analyzed and described the three main parts of a story. This accomplishment highlights his creativity and his ability to express complex ideas clearly. Outside of the classroom, Bryson is passionate about sports. Whether playing free safety on the football field, wrestling, or exploring the possibility of joining the track team, his commitment and energy stand out. These activities showcase his determination and team spirit. When it comes to staying motivated, Bryson values the support and encouragement of his friends. At home, his dad is a significant source of inspiration, always encouraging him to push his limits and remain resilient, especially during tough times. Bryson also shares a piece of advice with his peers: Don't get too stressed out about stuff. He lives by this advice by taking a step back to reflect on challenges and finding practical ways to address and overcome them. His thoughtful approach to setbacks and his focus on self-improvement serve as an example for all of us. Looking ahead, Bryson's goals for the school year are to be the best person he can be and to continue striving for academic success. He is particularly grateful to Mrs. Wilson, who has made a lasting impact with her humor and genuine care for him as an individual. Please join me in congratulating Bryson Scott for his achievements, his inspiring attitude, and his contributions to our school community.
Good evening. I'm Victor Suber, and I'm the proud principal of Wadsworth High School. And Wadsworth High School proudly presents Carissa Napier as December's Career Tech Student of the Month. Carissa is the daughter of Matt Napier, Michelle Martine, and David Drake. Carissa enjoys going out on trips with her family and spending time with her sisters Courtney, Chloe, and their dog Captain. And her favorite color is also the color green, the one she's wearing today with her shirt. Carissa is actively involved in a variety of activities at Wadsworth High School. Carissa is a section leader for the hood section in the margin band. She's also a section leader in the win ensemble. She is on the tech crew for the drama department, and she is in immediate production for the Four Cities, for the Four Cities Compact. She has received back-to-back awards from Ohio Academy in Science for the last two years for a business plan. Carissa is also currently enrolled in AP Government, AP Pre-Calcus, CCP Comp 1 and 2, and CCP Music as a World Phenomenon. She has lettered in academics with a GPA above 4.0, earning an excellent role, and has been named the Grizzly of the Week. Soon, Carissa will be playing for the Kent State Opera Band. Carissa has had a positive impact at Wadsworth High School in this compact program. Carissa's media teacher, Mr. Paul Taylor, had this to say. Carissa has been an absolute rock star in her Media 1 class. She is incredibly creative, grabs new concepts quickly, and takes on a leadership role with completing new projects. Additionally, Carissa has volunteered to work on live production staff and participated in three times as many productions as any other student in her class. This accomplishment is impressive on its own. However, she is able to manage this all while achieving high marks in advanced courses, which includes honors, AP, and college-written course classes. She is also heavily involved in the band and works in the drama department's tech crew. I am excited to see what her future holds. I have no doubt it will be bright. After graduating, Carissa plans to attend Kent State University at Stark to major in music technology and minor in photography. Please join me in congratulating Carissa. Thank you.
Wadsworth High School is proud to present Olivia Smith as December's Board Student of the Month. Ollie is the daughter of Megan Smith and Robert Malish. Her favorite activity is skiing with her family. She enjoys shopping and having lunch with her mom. Ollie loves to hang out and share laughter with her sister Lily Smith. Additionally, she likes playing football with her brother Leo Smith. And she wanted to make sure I mentioned her favorite color is pink. Ollie is actively involved in several extracurricular activities at Wadsworth High School. She serves as a section leader for the show choir and is a four-year letter winner for the Grizzly Cross Country Team. Throughout her career in cross country, she has earned accolades as a two-time All-Time Selection and a first-team All-Suburban League Member. Additionally, she has qualified for the state competition twice and the regional competition four times. Ollie is also part of the track team, where she was named second-team All-Suburban League and has qualified for the regional competition four times. Ollie's dedication to her academic pursuits is very impressive. She is currently enrolled in AP Chemistry, CCP Calculus 2, and 3, and CCP Speech. Throughout her high school career, she's taken a total of three advanced placement classes and seven CCP classes while actively participating in a variety of school activities. Ollie's exceptional 4.43 grade point average combined with her challenging performance over the past four years is a testament to her hard work and her commitment to her education. One of Ollie's teachers, Mrs. Parsons, had this to say about her. Ollie is an amazing person. I am so lucky to have had her in my AP Calculus class last year. Her positive attitude and enthusiasm for learning make her enjoyable to have in class. She works diligently and thinks critically about each problem and asks thoughtful questions to ensure a deep understanding of the material. While many students get easier math class for senior year, or not at all, Ollie has challenged herself by taking CCP Calculus 2 and 3 in a class simply taken by college sophomores. She will graduate high school with six math credits. Beyond her academic abilities, Ollie is a wonderful classmate. She is always willing to help others and makes every class more enjoyable. She is everything we hope for in a Wadsworth High School senior, and I am so excited to see what she will come to in the future. After graduating, Ollie plans to attend college and pursue an engineering degree. She will also have to continue running the college, however, she is still undecided about the university. Please join me in congratulating Ollie Smith.
Congratulations again to all of our Students of the Month and to family and friends for joining us. Thank you. We're going to be moving into the business portion of the board meeting. If you came just for the Students of the Month part, feel free to leave at this time, although all of you are welcome to stay as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this time we have two discussion items for this evening. Firstly, the continuing guideline on the Personal Communication Device Policy 5136. There was some feedback last time relating to the portion about completely powering for extracurricular activities after school activities. We did, as we shared, as I asked, we did get feedback from our principals from our coaches.
No one had an issue with making the policy align to the same type of requirements there are during the school day as opposed to something different with completely powering off? So we revised the policy accordingly and just clarified that the rules that are established in the handbook are for during school hours but also extracurricular activities as well. So I wanted to bring this back tonight as a reminder. Once we get to the point where you're comfortable with this, our next step before I would go back to you for a first reading officially would be to have our legal counsel review to make sure that he's in agreement that what you're looking at complies with the new law. So if there's any additional feedback or questions, I'd have you to listen and answer at this time. So I will give this to our legal counsel, and if there's changes, I'll note those to you. We'll bring this back in January for our first reading. The second item is a request to schedule special board meetings in January. Mr. Bevan has a request under his items as well to set the organizational meeting date, regular meeting date. I don't know if Mr. Bevan would make sense if we maybe look at all of that together right then, right now, if that's okay? So maybe we start with yours.
Well, so I didn't text Mr. McCollum as well, he was not here, he said that he is out of town the 4th through the 12th. So that might impact the special meeting, but I don't think we can wait until the 12th to have our organizational meeting. So that would be if you.
Are we back in school on the 6th, Michelle?
Yeah, the students return the 7th, the staff returns the 6th, our teachers return the 6th.
And I can't do the 9th and 10th of January. Can we, um, have our board organizational meeting on January 6th? I'm sorry, I was saying, January 6th for the organizational meeting?
Another question will be to the principals who are all out here. I want to make it to the Students of the Month before.
We can, we can round the Students of the Month, maybe double up at one of the later meetings and keep them away from January, if that's okay? So we're suggesting the 6th, then? Would that be a 7pm start?
Yes, if we're not going to do Students of the Month, maybe we could do 6. 6 at 6.
Yeah, that works. And then the regular meeting would immediately follow the organizational meeting like usual? And then the special meeting request, the first one that we need to schedule is for you to review the requests for, are the proposals that we received for the intermediate, the Central Intermediate School request for proposals. We put in that RFP document that you would consider those sometime in the week of January 13th. So we're looking for a special meeting some point that week for the purpose of reviewing the RFPs. Our understanding is that your review of the RFPs is something that is allowed in executive session. The RFP documents themselves are a public record.
I'm not open any day that week. When did you say, Gary Smith? 12?
12. Well, it's written except through the 12th.
I'm not available on the 15th in the evening. Amanda, 10, making on the 13th or 14th?
13th, looks good to me.
Okay.
14th.
13? If we're doing meetings, I can do, yeah, those. What time do you want that? That'll be just as I can do session, right?
Yeah, correct. There may be, by the time we get there, there could be some learning items, but the bulk of it will be executive session, correct? So I think that's really up to you, whatever time's best and most convenient.
What date was that, Ian? I'm sorry.
Monday the 13th?
13th, okay. Whatever time it was, could be done. 6 o'clock, okay, that night? It's fine.
We'll make that meeting at the Parsons Administration Building. And would you like dinner to be available that late at 6? Someone be coming straight from work. We can get food.
Sounds good. And did we say on the 6th that we were starting at 6?
6.
6 at 6.
Those meetings will be here. Okay, then the second meeting, the second special meeting, this one doesn't necessarily have to be in January, the sooner that we have it, I think, the better. We have some items that probably will, in some way, shape, or form, roll into our next strategic plan, which will start in calendar year 26. But there's some large financial items that we really should talk through to prioritize. So we have the work of the middle and high school athletic complex master plan committee, and we have the work that we would want to get some direction on with the drive that we would like to put into Overlook Elementary School now that we own that property to align to the stoplight. So I would ask your consideration to have a special meeting in January, probably sometime the week of the 20th or later, or even later in the 13th week, or whatever works for you, where we can start to have discussion and get some ideas of your thoughts on this stuff so that we can start to work through what we need to.
Okay, the 20th is the holiday. Any other conflicts that week?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Maybe word?
Aye.
Next, our action consent items, 1 through 15. Most of these are written out on the accompanying detail sheet of the agenda. I just want to point out two items. One, I want to thank Bueller's, Martin Ring, and Anita Edenway. Food donation from Ben Ursjevic in the Blue-Hair Restaurant. And then the Medina County Arts Council for their donations. Once again, as always, we are very fortunate to have so many individuals and businesses that support our students in many different ways. So thank you to them for their donations. Also wanted to point out number 7. While there's a detail written, this is for change orders relating to the new intermediate school building. Anything that's over $50,000 requires your approval. Of note, I wanted to mention the B, the orchestra shells ceiling hoist in the auditorium. That is a large expense, $500,000 plus $1,000. I just want to remind you in our community, we did know that expense would be coming. We had a bid as an alternate as we were working our way through the escalating cost phase when we were rebidding. We knew that at some point in order to have that auditorium fully functional, that those items would be needed. We've been able to do a good job with the building contingency of change orders with subtractions and additions along the way, that that account sits pretty healthy right now. And so that we believe this is the time to move forward and make the purchase in order to make sure that timing works out so it's ready to go when things, when things open. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the items, but I recommend to you action consent items 1 through 15.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Beaman?
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Can I let you slide it up, Davey?
Nothing further from last time, so.
Okay, we'll take it. So move on to board member items. If you're up to it.
Of course. All right, so let's look into some stuff that's happening around this political hospital, what's going to happen in the future before we get on break, you know, what's going to happen afterwards. So for all seniors, in case they aren't aware yet, the free application for federal student ABFSA opened just on December 1st. We have a college and advisor, Mr. Stoff, who's willing to help anybody who needs any questions answered regarding the BAFSA. He's located in Guidance, I know, for twice a week. Now, just later this week, actually tomorrow, sophomores will be wrapping up their visits to the career tech programs. The machine up at Copley will look at to explore programs like the vet tech and culinary arts. And as we approach our last week of school before midterms and finals, the high school has hosted a holiday theme spirit week starting today going all the way till Friday. Students can participate in various themed days from a jam day to a whiteout day to just celebrate holidays and showcase their school pride. Last Saturday, our student council shopped for an adoptive family at Walmart's, and this was just an awesome opportunity to make change in our community and support those around us. And then from next Wednesday, December 18th, to next Friday, December 20th, students will have their midterm exams throughout the school. If you're unaware of the schedule, I need to know it. Dr. Super sent out an email just yesterday that had all of the exam schedule on that. And then after we get back from break, on January 9th, although this will be after our next meeting, I'll give you a reminder now that the Waltham High School AP teachers will be opening AP informational day. This will be an opportunity for students, parents, and guardians to learn more on specific AP programs throughout the school and just know what to expect going into the upcoming school year with what we can offer there. Now looking to fine arts, just last Thursday through Saturday, Off-Broad Street players presented their play, A Christmas Carol. I'd like to congratulate all of them. Great job there. Athletes, phenomenal. Now, just two Saturdays ago, the Waltham High School Art Club finished painting a mural down at Alter Care, which is an interesting facility, and this mural depicted a forest to help those in the memory care units be able to experience things that look more like nature throughout the winter. It was really well done. Congratulations to all of them. Then just last Friday, we kicked off our show by our community performances, and along with that, the Christmas Choir Concerts are already sold out for the Sunday, Thursday, and Friday. Tickets are already going. Good luck to all of those that are going to be singing then. And then finally, in the fine arts, I'd like to wish good luck to our jazz band, who will be performing for the Chamber of Commerce this upcoming Wednesday. Good luck to all of you involved. Now looking to sports, Mr. Lynn and Mr. Homer Kouser will have brought back the annual basketball league. This will allow for a lot of games happening throughout the entire month of December. It allows for students to form their own teams and play against others. It's a really awesome experience. Good luck to all the teams involved. And then overall, just winter sports as a whole have all started their competitions by now, and I would like to personally shout out our swim team just last Wednesday. One of our boys and girls team both won their dual meet against Twinsburg. Congratulations to them. And the final highlight for sports that I'd like to showcase is our wrestling team, who just last Saturday finished first out of 13 in the Wayne Invitational. Congratulations to all of those involved. And with that, I'd like to wish everybody happy holiday season, safe travels, and I will look forward to seeing you guys all in 2025.
Julie?
Thank you. It's always hard to follow Connor. I want to highlight, and I've certainly seen it in all the newsletters and on our Facebook page, is the Cleveland Cavaliers of Waltham City Schools Night Out, which I believe is January 30th. And the Rhythm and Red and the New Edition Choirs are going to be singing the National Anthem. And elementary students get the opportunity to be in the anthem, I'm not quite sure what that is, but okay. Or in being in the anthem, which I think is a great opportunity for them. And I want to congratulate the Rolling Grizzlies for their first win on Saturday. They edged out Perry 22 to 19, so very excited and happy for them. And I guess I just wanted to also, you know, thank and wish the best success to all of the schools, and I know all of our schools adopt a family during the holiday season, and it really warms my heart to see the big promotion of that. So I'm really hoping that all of those needs get filled and that our, you know, for our families and our students in need, and I just want to wish them good, happy holidays. Happy new year.
Thank you, Jill.
Yeah, so let's see. I'm looking out at all of our administrators and principals. You guys look like you're ready for a break. So nine more days, is that right? Yeah, nobody's counting. Can't believe it, we're already at this stage of the school year. But I just want to offer some encouragement, not only to our principals and administrators, to our teachers as well, all of our school employees, but to our families. Parents also hang in there. We know it gets hectic this time of year, and at the older your children get, seems like there are more opportunities for them to be involved in, you know, the choir programs and sports and just other extracurriculars. So we're thankful that our school has so many opportunities for our students, and this time of year, we get to see them showcased. So for whatever it is that's going on in the elementaries, CIS, middle school and high school, hang in there. We're going to get through it, and it's going to be a good time. I can speak on behalf of a parent of someone who is involved in the drama program. Just was really pleased to see the turnout for A Christmas Carol and just for all the support for our drama program. And of course, this week, there are some choir concerts, as we heard. It's a busy week. We were talking beforehand, there's something happening every night in this building, in and on, in the bonus as well. So just thankful for, this is such a great opportunity for our students. And for those who have midterms next week, finish strong and come back ready for 2025.
Good job.
Excuse me. First, I wanted to congratulate the enterprising young students at Lincoln for their amazing fundraiser. I was just absolutely blown away, so impressed on how well they did. So congratulations to them. Also swelled with a ton of pride when we got a chance to livestream the marching band and Philip and the Band at the parade. God bless them. They marched in all sorts of weather. It just, it just don't stop. So I'm trying to dream up a special t-shirt with them in a storm, and they keep marching forward. But boy, I was just so proud of them and the way they represented our community. And I do want to wish all the kids best of luck on the midterms, like Tim was saying. I was waiting the schedule, and it kind of, that old pet lobby and conditioned response of sheer terror and panic like I used to have. But I wish them all the best, and I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll do well. And then special note, one of our alumni is going to be playing in the first college playoff game in South Bend, Indiana on January 20th, I'm sorry, December 20th at 8:00 PM. God willing, they'll be playing on January 20th for the championship, but good luck to Mitchell Evans and the Notre Dame Vikings. So had to get that in. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. After my comment last school, we're meeting again. I'm not going to mention any college football. I also wanted to give a shout out to Mrs. Claypool and Mrs. Rees for their second grade economics fair, which I attended and shopped every single booth with a lot of creative ideas. I had to bring my rock, it was my favorite thing. So I thoroughly enjoyed my time there. Very creative kids, good way to learn about economics. We had an opportunity to tour the intermediate school just before this meeting, and everything is coming along really nicely. It's great to see what's been happening there, and a big thanks to Mr. Moore for all he's doing over there. It's very muddy right now, so I can't recommend it, but soon, soon, go over and see it. I want to give a shout out to the Waltham Bowling Team, who's apparently on fire and doing well, but their social media person is just doing an exceptional job. They're on my, they're on my Facebook all the time, so well done by them, and also wish everybody a happy holiday, and thank you. Okay, moving on to ratification of resignations. If I can get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Beaman?
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Okay, well, now recess and executive session. We do not plan to return to discuss employment, certain purchase of property for public purposes, and matters required to be kept confidential by law. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And we're done. Thank you.
Can you call, can you call rope for that? Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Thank you.